Great, all right. Welcome, everybody. Today is Tuesday. Are you recording?
Uh-uh.
Just kidding. Hey, I caught it pretty early this time. All right, now we're good, right? All right. Welcome, everybody. Today is Tuesday, March 12th, 2024. It's 4:54 PM. We're convening today as the Provo City School District Board of Education. We're meeting at 280 West, 940 North in Provo, Utah. We're going to begin today's study session with a rule call. I'm Rebecca Nielsen, Board President.
Jennifer Partridge-Slyte.
Lisa Boyce, Board Member.
Meg Van Wagenen, Board Member.
Max Joyner, Student Member.
Will Widener, Student Member.
Gina Hales, Board Member.
Terry McKee, Board Member.
Devin Dilly, Interim Business Minister.
Wendy Dow, Superintendent.
Okay, and we excuse Melanie Hall, who can't be with us today. And also send a welcome to everyone who's here with us today. Thank you for being here. And for those who are watching online, we're happy to have all of you. And is there a motion to convene our study session today?
I'm hoping we convene our study session.
All right, motion made by Board Member Hales. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Partridge. We're now in our study session. Did I miss someone else? And we're gonna start today with a board handbook training given by Meg Van Wagenen.
Sorry, go back. Okay, uh, this should be quick. So, we're gonna quickly review the norms in the handbook. Mostly, as I read through these, I think it is by and large how we as a board interact with each other, right? And how we are productive. We do our jobs, but we also are able to speak and share opinions, right? So I will go through them really quickly and just add a few little things. If anyone has anything to add, feel free. So, Board Members will keep learning and achievement for all students as the primary focus. I think that is obviously very important. And I think as we're doing our strategic plan, right? We really are trying to keep that as one of our focuses. Be considerate of other Board Members by not dominating airtime in the meetings and refraining from making combative or argumentative statements. When I think about this, this is important, but I also think we have to then make sure we are finding ways to speak up and disagree in a way that's healthy because we also, I don't want any of these norms, right, to prevent us from speaking to things that we need to speak to, right? And that just if we disagree, that isn't combative, just because we don't agree on something, right? And so being mindful of not just lumping disagreement and, whoa, that's combative, right? So, I know, I guess that's important for myself to remember. Represent the Board with dignity and integrity. Treat fellow Board Members with respect and consideration. Or treat, treat or trust. Treat fellow Board Members with respect and consideration through civil discourse, honesty, and respect, especially when there are disagreements. So kind of what I spoke to in the second norm. Respect, support, and uphold the final decisions made by the Board of Education as a body, even if in the minority. Maintain this respect when making appearances before external bodies and constituencies. I think this is hard, right? And something that I know I, as we continue, I continue to report in the next few years, being mindful of that. A few of my own takeaways, I kind of already spoke to a little bit, is making sure we follow these norms, but also bring ourselves to the table and show the things that we feel like we need to share. And also, when I think of norms generally, I do think it's kind of like tradition. There are times when just because we've always done something a certain way doesn't mean we just keep doing it if it's not in the best interest of our district or our students or for us working together as a board. And I think as a board in the year that I've been on the Board, I think I have appreciated the changes, I think, that I have seen happen. I think with communication, I think even the way we do agenda planning and having a document where we can input what we would like to see on agendas in the future and even the communication before Board meetings coming from Board Leadership about what's gonna be on the agendas and kind of giving those heads up. So, obviously, those aren't specific norms within these norms, but I think if you're going outside of like, how can we do things better? And I think always thinking as a Board in that way, too. Just because we've done something this way doesn't mean we always do it. So. Our norms.
Okay, great. Any questions for Meg or any input from any other Board Members?
I don't know about answers.
But we're giving you the questions. This is no. Okay. Perfect, thank you so much, Meg. We appreciate that. Appreciate those reminders. Okay, on to item number five. We're going to have a construction update now, given to us by Chad Jones.
You can take your spot.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Hey, Chad.
Ooh. We're making progress. We're moving. Overall, no, things are, things are all going well on all three of the projects. And we're moving along well for now. And I was asking before, and it sounds like the noise of the demolition tent view isn't horrible.
It's not.
Okay. Keep going. All right, so the good news on the demolition is, we talked about before all the kind of at-risk areas. We're, for the most part, now fully disconnected from the disney building. So we're kind of hopefully past all the risks. There's still some underground connections with the tunnels, but it's not going to cause a wall to fall in or something. So, this area, the old gym, was the big, heavy concrete beams that we thought were gonna take a lot longer to do, which actually went pretty fast. However, because of the noise over in that area, they did slow down, and they've been doing it only after 2:30. They've been kind of clearing and working other areas, but then where it's right up next to it, only 2:30. This is the cafeteria next to the cafeteria. If you go to the next picture, we're gonna go inside where this hole is. So that's that hole. So this wall is the cafeteria over here. And so we are disconnected. This part of the structure remains. We're reusing the steel columns here that are kind of wrapped around with the masonry. So that's been stripped away. It looks good. So, the structural engineer's been out there, no concerns with it. So, we're looking to be in good shape with what we're seeing and uncovered. So, yeah, you can see this is against a thunderdome here, all cleared out. They're starting to, where it's a slab-on grade and not underground, they've already started to tear that out. We're talking about that temporary stair. Wait, go back one, sorry. It's right inside this door. So in the next phase, this'll all be built in, and an elevator will be right there. Just another look at that.
Wait, the next phase of phase three? Or if we move to?
Sorry, the current planned construction.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, more of the same. That's looking at the new gym, the backside of the new gym. This is over at administration, the old entry into the building. Administration has moved back in. So this is gonna be going into the new commons area here, so they'll be open. They've separated everything there. There's still some soft cutting being done, so counseling has not moved in because of the noise yet. Planning to, tentatively next week, but administration has moved back in. So, the next step now, we still are tracking on schedule. As long as things go as well as it did over here, it's now gonna be tearing out all the ground and the tunnels. So they're gonna start over here, strip all this out, and just get rid of all the, everything underground, all the concrete. We should be good to keep going. This has been good. Again, we got the structural engineer because we've been able to see what's, a little more of what's under the skin. There is rebar. They did a kind of interesting where they had one coming out of the ground and then one from above, but they're not tied together. So it's better nothing. Current standards makes them at least tie those together.
And where is that at?
This was the old north gym. Right out in front of the cafeteria.
The main gym?
Yes, the one we just tore down. Okay?
And at least that is reinforced with concrete. Some of the others that they opened, right, were not.
Yeah, it's.
They were just closed.
I don't have the picture, but some areas are reinforced where the rebar was reinforced, but there's another hole right over here that had nothing in it. So it's spotty. But it tells us what we need to do to reinforce going forward. Okay? Bleachers are looking like bleachers. Concessions going, next one. This is inside the bleachers, I think. Yeah. Getting the drywall on. This is in the locker room, so we'll see tile going in there pretty soon. The next one. Inside the concessions building, so this'll be kind of the concessions area. Getting the insulation in, so we'll see drywall start going inside of there. One of the restrooms got the insulation, completion of all the piping, and then we'll see drywall going in there. So they're both moving on schedule. We'll be open this summer, as we talked about. Now the next phase. So this is for reference. This is what it's going to look after the current phase. So this is what's now going to be built right here. This is the auditorium administration. This is the current plan. And so next one, this is very tentative, as we're trying to figure out the master planning, but this is kind of seemed to be the favored master plan, which means first, we tear down the auditorium and performing arts, move them over to here. Kind of move music away because they're loud. Auditorium, public, or student entry directly from the new commons area here with an overflow into there, and then public comes straight into it. With that out of the way, administration, counseling, kind of shift over for more of a grand entry into the main, that grand hall there. So it's, it's the spot right where everybody's gonna pass. Gives them the best visibility of everybody and a nice front entry to it.
So as they come in, they like choose admin or counseling?
Exactly. Yep. East wing, CTE, the woods, meadows, auto, goes out to the top of the parking lot. This becomes parking, which is much more leveling up here. We get rid of those drainage problems that didn't been in the past. Gets parking, a lot more parking closer to the stadium. There's still space. There's still things to be worked out. Art and sped from there, goes down here, this one. We still need to work out because this is two stories, so there's windows that would be blocking. So that needs to either have a courtyard or one of the thoughts is to move that on top of here for more of a grand, taller entry in the front side, just the one story. And then the cafeteria stays in place. So this is work in progress. Now what we've done, we've kind of established this. Now we're going through, meeting with them every week, every Thursday. Last week, we talked about administration, where we're going through the space, the how much space they need. Since they did that program the first round, we're basically just taking that and verifying and say, here's what we heard you said, and you need it for the spaces. Does this still work? And so, at that point, we'll know how big all of this is exactly and how all fits together. Questions?
Does this keep the same amount of parking?
Actually, more.
Okay.
Okay.
Great. Well, that's the best answer you could have given.
Anyone check that off? Where's, remind, the CTE, is that where we just put the most recent parking though?
Yes.
Right, that we, that we had, which.
Yeah.
And the one.
That's where the driver's ed.
Thing that makes me, yeah.
Driver's ed is right up here.
But it's a detached building, right? Is that?
Oh, for safety.
Yeah, for safety issues, a detached building. Is there any way to figure out how to attach it?
We could, yes. Just keep it where it is.
Without it being like extremely more expensive or, you know what I mean? Like, is there a good medium?
You have a big elevation gain, change between here, which makes it challenging. Part of them prefers to be separate just because they have so many deliveries and they can have a big yard for storage.
Well, when our seminary buildings are separate, are we worried about that?
You're already dealing with.
Well, yeah, it's like an open campus that, I don't, I guess, I don't know. No, that's true.
It's already an open campus. We can explore more.
Well, if everybody else disagrees with me, we don't have to explore that. That's just the one thing that I've seen.
I have a similar concern. And just for cohesion of the school. I mean, seminary is not part of our school, so that's a whole different thing, but.
I was just thinking, safety-wise, like.
No, I agree.
Either way, we can still try to mitigate as much risk as possible, right?
It is quite, it is quite a decline. I know I walked it in heels today, and it was a little tricky to get down, like, from that parking space down to the building, and it gets steep.
And then, like, the cost, if the cost is gonna be a lot more than, we're broke.
I hope someone filmed that, right?
I hope. Where is the CTE building right now?
Where that, where the parking.
Okay, so we're just swapping.
Yeah.
So is it still detached, like, yet, right now?
If you try to.
It's like attached, okay.
It's attached.
This would be cheaper to have it unattached. And then to attach it would be a lot more money.
We'd have to look into, we'd have to figure out how to deal with the retaining wall there. Accessibility still.
Is there an accessibility issue with it being moved, with leather, et cetera?
That's part of it. As they're looking at this, we're also gonna look at that because I think this is a pathway, but we're gonna have to confirm it is. Yeah, if they're going this way, you'd have, for accessibility, it would likely need to be there, but we're gonna still explore that.
I do think for consistency's sake as a district, when we have talked about moving portables to other schools, et cetera, we have raised the concern that having that separate from the school is a safety concern, so.
I guess I always think of that more in reverse elementary school.
It's true. We have high school students coming and going with an open campus.
I mean, they're getting their cars, getting their road, they're just going.
But anything we can do to create safety. Safe in our high school. Yeah.
So is that something we can take the safety committee and have a discussion about?
I think we just need to get two different bids. I think, I think we need to find out how, what is the cost differential between having the CTE building attached and what does that look like? Because based on what I've seen, I think that's gonna be a sizable increase to the cost, but, you know, anyway. Well, I think then we need to weigh. Yes. How much of the safety is it? Because if it's significantly safer to have it detached, we need to find a way to pay for it, right? We should make a financial decision that trumps safety decision, in my opinion.
Is it possible to move the CTE closer to where counseling is and then move that parking to where CTE is, or?
Move it down here.
Oh, sorry.
So pretty.
You don't want like the auto stuck in the front.
Yeah, somehow it is, oh, it looks like it closed.
This is why we don't be in charge of it.
I can't be in charge of two things at one time.
You're saying move it down to where the old performing arts was?
Yeah. Is that possible?
Like where the bus lane, like. Where the current bus lane is? So like across from that parking lot area?
Great.
So right across from the counseling, where counseling would be?
Well, on that picture.
We have the auto stuff all in.
In that corner, in that left corner right there.
Can it fit there?
But it's still detached, right?
Yeah.
It's closer to the building.
But it's still a walk, that's a, that's a much different walk.
It is. And admin's much closer.
You know.
It is super far, too. But it was one thing that I was thinking as well, is like, are we gonna have to have longer passing periods and all that kind of stuff, just to get kids out to that?
Yeah.
Chad, was there any talk of rebuilding it in its current location? And we just find a place for those classrooms during the reconstruction?
Yes, and again, it went back to that change in elevation, the change in height of there. That this would be much cheaper, easier. Yeah. Because it's, as it is now, you've got the first floor only goes about halfway under the floors above.
That's right.
And so it kind of stair steps up the hill. And so one side would be no windows into the dirt. We'll look at it, another option.
More expensive, right? I would like to see more, somehow try to figure out how to get it attached.
Or on the other side of where music is?
As long as we don't, we still need a secondary access into the stadium. And so if we did, yeah, we could do something here, but we still need to maintain. But that's another option as well. And then just keep it as parking, since we just barely did it.
Yeah, you could have.
Yeah.
Can I ask a clarifying question? You said meeting on Thursdays for programming. You mentioned talking to the admin. Have you also been talking with, like, the music people, the art sped for their programming, too? Or just the admin?
That's what we're doing. So, last Thursday was admin and counseling. Next Thursday, I think, is gonna be performing arts, then the next one.
So some of the teachers and people are.
Each week is different. Yeah.
And talk to CTE, as well?
Yes.
And give them options?
Yep. And then the cafeteria is gonna be one of those meetings as well.
All right, are there any further questions or comments on this?
Thank you.
We got more.
We got Shoreline and Wasatch.
We got Shoreline, Wasatch. I'll go through these fast, but just stop if you have any questions. North side is fully topped out on the masonry.
Is that a stairwell or what?
Skinny little thing right there in the front?
Right here?
No, in the very front of the screen.
Yeah, right there.
Oh, that's, yeah, that's a stairway, and that's the entry in from the lower part. And then that turns into the stairwell right here. That's the stairwell. This is the south end. Roofing on this starts Monday, which was, is one of our critical path items, so it's good to get that going. And then, next one. This is a kindergarten area that they started doing the masonry. They expect to be done with that end of next week. And then they'll finish over in the lunchroom area, the cafeteria. And then they'll go straight from that, the masons are gonna stay, and start doing the brick veneer to go on the outside to make it look.
Yes, somebody asked, is there gonna be? I got that specific question this week. Now you know the answer. I was gonna ask, what, remind me what the finish is gonna be on the front?
It'll be brick.
Yeah, yeah.
This is downstairs, inside the kindergarten area, which is the masonry going up, getting the conduit into the walls. Look at the front, yes, that will be a break on top.
It looks like a building, this is exciting.
Yeah.
But also windows, that's exciting.
Is the kindergarten area like the last part?
Kindergarten area, no, and then the cafeteria and the auditorium stage. Right there. That'll be the last part.
Can I ask while we're on this picture, how far north from here was that sinkhole?
I wonder.
Oh, yeah.
It's 1450.
It was like a street, a street out that way.
Yeah, if you go up, this is Oak Cliff. It's right on 1450, right up there.
Really?
But it looked like it had to be like a li, a water liner, so there was so much water in there. But it wasn't like soil, it seemed like water.
I'm like, this isn't like a runoff.
That's what I'm worried about.
Sinkhole by our school problem, is it?
No, it look, it looks like it.
Did you see it, Chad? I don't know. Could you see it?
Sorry, no, sorry. Anyway. No, because we do, the soil studies show that that's not the case. I had the same concern. Sorry.
Okay, next one. Just more of the still working side, getting the stairs in, so it's easier to go up and down. Drywall on the first floor is going in. They do one side first, then do the, all the power and conduit and everything on the other side. And then this is the second floor, already getting framed out. The drywalls will just move straight up there. They're kind of going first north, first south, back and forth all the way up. This is for the final part of the retaining wall. This is, so this is the north entrance. So this will be the final retaining wall and a stair that separates the lower parking from the upper parking. So as soon as they get that in, they'll, and hopefully we don't have much rain, they'll start getting going on more of the side work, finalizing the side work in the playgrounds. The drone, if you do want to watch it? So, yeah, here's where they're doing that last one, it was in that last picture. There's that entry you're talking about with the stairs. Stage right here, ended the multipurpose.
Have to be audio.
Where's the background?
Okay.
There is too much space.
It feels like the building is balancing out all the big walls. It doesn't feel like they look so big anymore, right? Yeah.
Okay, Shoreline?
There we go. There was another drone. I was gonna skip that one.
Yeah, let's go, I have the drone.
Shoreline is on schedule, going well. They're going to, you can see they've already, away from the, around the building, they've already got the landscaping, the rock and the mulching. In about two weeks, as long as the weather cooperates, they're gonna move the trailers out, finish this courtyard with the live skills and with, starting to really get going on asphalt and the landscaping around the building. Roof is on, elevator's 90% complete, so it's in good shape. The rest of the glass that's missing should be coming next week to start installation. So, yeah, this is main entry in here, the auditorium entry. Next one, auditorium entry. Then inside in the academic wings, they're really coming along. They've got 80% of the millwork in, the case work in. They've got, it's all painted, ceilings are in. Starting to get whiteboards up, and you can see the TV back box, so getting the finishes starting to go into the wing here. The main entry, this is looking back, so you come in the door here. This is gonna be the reception, front desk, media center up above, getting the drywall in. I'd say probably 99% of drywall is in the whole building, so. Just going through, this is back in the office space of the admin there. Getting the mud on and getting the drywall finalized, it should be painted by next time. The commons, learning stair, same thing, getting the ceilings in, getting the drywall. So it's coming along, the cafeteria, already being painted, getting the serving line set up. Glasses already in that area, the auditorium, the, what they call, yeah, this is the front entry, drywall going in, and then this, the door should be coming next week. Then inside, they still have what they call the dance floor up there to do that ceiling that's up. It should be coming down in the next couple of weeks, but they're still getting drywall in there on the walls, so it's still progressing. And, oh, I didn't even take a picture of performing arts since it's done, same as last time.
Sweet, thank you.
Okay.
All right, any other questions for Chad? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, and now we are going to have an Avid update. Superintendent Dow.
All right, here we go. Avid update. So, just wanted to give you a little bit of a background as to where we are with Avid. We are moving forward, full speed ahead with our four secondary schools that we have at Centennial, Shoreline, Tempe U, and Provo. And I just wanted to help people understand a little bit about what the underlying beliefs of Avid.
of Avid are. It does stand for advancement via individual determination, which sometimes means something to somebody and might not mean something to somebody else. But it's basically the idea that we're arming kids with the ability to make decisions about their education and to advocate for themselves. It focuses on tier one instruction with the idea of closing the opportunity gap. Best learning occurs through collaboration and community. So a lot of the instructional strategies that are utilized are all about that. And you'll hear teachers talk about WICER strategies. It stands for writing inquiry, collaboration, organization, and reading. And all of these incidentally align very nicely with a lot of the research that John Hattie has done. We can align it really well with research around assessment capable learners and our instructional strategies that actually have the highest effect size. But Avid really believes that teachers are the key to student's success and that we need to teach students how to advocate for their learning. I think I had a parent who said, it allows students to figure out the ways in which they learn and the best tools to utilize for what they're learning and that becomes kind of the core. And so instead of Avid being something where you hear it's good teaching or it's an elective class, it really is a philosophy that should be governing how a school operates. So there are deliberate structures that Avid provides in a school to provide opportunities for all students and the goal is to push high expectations for all. I think there's a concern across the board about making sure that we have rigorous instruction, that we're pushing students to the highest levels possible, but also providing supports for them, recognizing that some students need that additional support to access those opportunities. That can be given through an Avid elective. Sometimes it's done through the specific strategies like organizational strategies that a teacher might support students with. But I do like the third bullet. It helps students to identify how they learn and to use the tools that are most effective for them. And so the idea is that teachers are teaching kids, here are different ways in which you can approach things and that we're really focusing on these post-secondary outcomes. Like how are we preparing you for the next step? And Avid is trying to maximize those opportunities. So what does that mean for Provo City School District? It really should be the framework that shapes our decision-making. I keep hearing people talk about that it's a program or it's just good teaching. When it's a program, it becomes something that's very, that really restricts our thinking. It should not be that. It should be something that's opening up our possibilities and that we're focusing on what is going to help each school be successful and to reach its goals. So as we're looking at their improvement plans, how are there components of Avid that can help us to do that? It is a deliberate process to elevate the academic achievement and opportunities for all students while we're trying to increase engagement, but also performance of students. What does that look like? We've talked about, we, Daryl and I went around and met with every single one of the secondary schools, their administrative teams, their, if they have an Avid site coordinator and administrator that's over at Avid to kind of talk about what are the next steps at each school. And we really talked about have an outcome in mind. So what does that portrait of a graduate look like? And then let's backwards design that so we're getting kids the skills that they need to actually be successful. What are those dispositions? What is the knowledge level they need? What are the skills that they need? And then we need to set some measurable outcomes. I think part of our piece with Avid is, we haven't coordinated this with, like, how is this supposed to change our outcomes? Like what does this do? And we have some really strong measures that we can start looking at in terms of how many students are taking AP or CE courses, completing CTE pathways. What does that look like? Are we actually narrowing the opportunity gap for students? So we can do that. So I just want to give you a highlight of each of the schools. So Timpew High School, they have a specific goal in their school improvement plan to increase access to advanced coursework for underrepresented student groups. They do have an Avid site coordinator that assists with just, really, there's a tool that helps them monitor how avid they are, if you will. That takes some time. It takes some time to help train teachers in these Avid strategies. And so at Timpew, it's costing approximately $137,000, which they're funding entirely through their school community council, through land trust and TSSA money. They did talk about construction kind of stalling their professional development because they were so busy trying to worry about getting into the new building. But they did do a survey last year and 75% of their faculty rate their experience with Avid as excellent or good. There are still faculty members that are struggling with its overall purpose and how this, how this fits. So I think they're just talking about how they need more direction and how does it fit with PLCs. So that's part of the mission and so they don't see these as individual components. They see that, that Avid becomes something that is happening with PLCs, with the goals of teacher clarity and all of that is working together to improve student outcomes. So, and our coaches, our instructional coaches at the secondary level will be trained in Avid and we do have an Avid specialist that, that has been hired. That will be Jenny Thurston, who is an assistant principal at Provo High School. She's going to help with Avid implementation district-wide. Provo High School has a very high functioning Avid site team. They've used it primarily to support new teachers. They've used about 0.75 of an FTE to help support the Avid elective with about $50,000 going towards professional learning. They really want to look at how their existing goals are, again, supporting, working with Avid, not seen as a separate program. So you see a lot of the similar kinds of things happening. There are challenges to embed at schoolwide just beyond organizational strategies. You'll hear teachers talk about Avid notebooks and planners. We really need to get beyond that. Like, yes, that's a really important skill that we want students to have. It's really important that we want them to be able to take focus notes, but really it's about can you read? Can you think critically? Can you write? Can you receive feedback? Do you know how to, how to express your learning? Do you know how to collaborate with others and problem solve? Centennial Middle School, they're spending about $50,000 towards the Avid elective. Their biggest difficulty is really sustaining that elective. What is the purpose of the elective? They really felt like they kind of got absorbed into Avid as a result of an infusion of ESAR money, rather than it kind of being more of a grassroots movement like what we had at Provo and Timpew. They really would like to go and see an Avid middle school, see it in action. And one of their challenges has been that there are other needs that have been a bigger priority. However, they're very committed. They're taking a team of teachers to the Avid conference and I think we're seeing with that support that's going to come from the district, we can kind of align this in a much better way, seven through 12. And that we don't see these really disparate kinds of programs. It really becomes the way in which we do things in Provo City School District, grades seven through 12. Dixon Middle School, spending approximately $135,000. It is much more embedded in the school culture. There are still some that really see it as just another program or one more thing to do. It does seem to be more difficult for elective teachers to see the connection there, but they are seeing that it provides some structures for success. So they've done a good job of identifying where the weak spots are and really trying to figure out, hey, how are we going to incorporate this into our school improvement plans and what do we need from the district for that support? So just to be very transparent, our membership dues, Canyon Crest has also adopted Avid. They are funding that out of their own funds for the most part, but we do pay through our district-wide membership dues, $25,961. That's for five sites. We are going to be paying for a half of an FTE as an Avid district specialist. We will pull that, that, I would say, half of her responsibility will be towards Avid. And then just the FTE to support elective classes and instructional coaches is about $325,000 with the professional learning that usually, we're usually training about 50 to 60 people per year that we're sending to the summer institute. And so at a total cost of $573,461 approximately, that amount. Approximately. We kind of went through and did a, I like a SWAC analysis instead of a SWOT analysis where you look at strengths, opportunities, weaknesses, and challenges. We kind of talked about a lot of these things, but I do think we have an opportunity with our new administrative teams, with our coaches, with the Avid emphasis to really do a reset and really try to explain and bring our communities and our teachers on board and help them see what our goals are. I think, I think also having some metrics in place as to how we're going to measure this would be super helpful. Our challenges, cost, you know, everything has a cost. It does have some, you know, people always ask me, well, can we just do this on our own? Yes, we definitely can do this on our own. Part of this is Avid kind of packages that professional learning. It isn't like the professional learning isn't going to cost you that amount of money. It's just going to look different in terms of it. And so this does provide some very content-specific learning of how Avid applies in their content area. And our principals have done a good job of identifying even some elected teachers to go to the Avid training so they can see how that applies in their content area. So obviously a weakness, does this create more stress for teachers? I think if you asked any teacher, they would tell you probably yes. So we have to, we have to figure out, how do, how do we help them see that this is a part of the lesson planning process? This isn't something you do in addition to your lesson planning. This is a part. It should be embedded in your lesson planning. And so sharing that with them. Recommendations and next steps, why Avid and not something else? We would have to, like I said, we would have to make this investment to improve our post-secondary outcomes anyway. It does provide a framework for our professional learning, our coaching model, our portrait of a graduate, but we want to be clear that Avid doesn't get to dictate our decision-making. The portrait of a graduate and what our outcomes are dictates our decision-making and then we utilize the components of Avid that are going to help us get there. So I think what has happened in the past is we often fall in love with a program and then we just adopt everything in the program and think the program's going to fix everything. It doesn't work like that. We need to decide what we're going to do as a district and then utilize the pieces of Avid that are going to help us get there. And then I just put track our data. And there's a ton of data that we need to be tracking. We should be part of the National Clearing House where we can track where students enroll in college. I found out we haven't had access, I don't believe, to that data. That's easy, that we can start that process. We can start tracking our post-secondary opportunities. We can track number of failing grades, correlate that with proficiency rates on end-of-level tests. We know we have a disparity, right? We have a lot of kids who are graduating, but our proficiency rates aren't showing that. So that should, that gap should start to close if Avid is doing its job. We also want to see greater numbers of students taking advanced courses. I know as, as you see schools, like if you look at Park City, one of their things that they've done to really close that opportunity gap is they have it as a goal that every single student takes an advanced course before they graduate from high school. And so they're really providing the supports in place and recognizing that there's a lot of variation in terms of what's defined as advanced. It's not always CE or AP. It can be a CTE course. It can be language courses, lots of different things. We need to track surveys of teachers and students and do a lot of classroom observations. And we can also track attendance too. If we're really improving the engagement of students, we hope that that would help with attendance. Though attendance is always the thing that I feel like we haven't quite figured out a solution for that. What questions do you have? I tried to go really fast. Thank you. Questions for Wendy? Yes.
So I guess doing this, how do we help teachers kind of come along? Because I, you know, I do think finding that balance of right and making me do one more thing. I guess is that something within the school culture, like with our administrators, to kind of help that process?
I think, I think so. I think also as they start to see the value, they're, they're still trying to see the value of PLCs as well, but, but in a PLC conversation, there should be like, okay, what is my objective? How am I measuring this? What are the best ways to arrive at this? And you're going to incorporate a whole bunch of Avid pieces in that because that's going to be your, those are going to be your best instructional strategies in that, in that process. The individuals that are very resistant to that are sometimes individuals that are like, well, I lecture or I do this or this is how I've always done it. And we just need them to maybe go and see sometimes other teachers that are trying new things and give them permission to try and not to work the first time. Like, like sometimes it's not going to work and it's okay. And we need to allow them to grow as well. We can't expect that perfection right out of the gates. So just easing that, hey, then just try one thing. Just try that, see how that goes. Lisa?
And it's not curriculum.
Nope.
It's a set of tools and sort of mindsets and things.
Yeah. Tools and mindset, I like that. That works well.
But it probably, I mean, I'm just thinking for me as, as a teacher, it would feel tricky if I'm trying to make a lot of changes to a new, even just set of language of what I'm already doing, right? How do I map that on? What am I responsible to? How do I, I don't know. I just, I liked that one of the actionable things there was around clarity because I think what happens is we do get different versions of something and people feel like it's more prescriptive in practice than it is like, here are some principles to empower you.
That's right.
To your own practice. Like where do I bring my own art as a teacher into the room?
I do.
Because none of us like to be told how to do our jobs.
That's very true.
I like to be clear what my job is and I like to have tools, but I don't want to be told.
Right.
How I should do it.
Right. And I, and I think, I think that's where we have to look at what are the tools that are happening and then as we see things that occur, you know, if a teacher's coming saying, I don't understand why my kids are not doing as well. And we say, well, let's, let's go in and see what's happening in this particular class and see how we can support and help. And some of these strategies can be very helpful with that. Yeah.
What are the outcomes other districts have seen through Avid?
It's a great question. It depends. If you go into like your San Diego schools where they're really funded quite well in terms of Avid, they've been able to close your opportunity gap. So for example, you'll see opportunity gaps that exist in terms of who's, who's taking AP courses and CE courses and it's generally going to be white, wealthier students. And this will show that almost every single kid will have access to that regardless of what student group they're a part of. I don't feel like in Utah, we've seen quite that kind of success because I don't know that it's been as embedded or that we've had district-wide adoption. Provo's kind of in a unique situation because we're a smaller district, so we really could embed this. I see it as an opportunity to embed this with our culture, so. But California schools have had a lot of success because they've actually had a line item in their budget where they're actually supporting Avid in many of their districts that can apply for that funding, so. Other questions?
Yeah, could you just speak to maybe what role that Jenny Thurston, that the Avid specialist will be doing to, to do this on a district level? Like what's still at school? What is she going to support? Is it PD? Is it individual help?
It's, it's all of the above, but one of the things that's a huge component of Avid is also if you're really running it appropriately, you're actually bringing in college tutors to help in the Avid class. And that has just been way beyond the capacity of requiring a principal to do that. So other districts, when they have an Avid site coordinator, they actually coordinate with the universities and then they create the master's schedule with the support of that so you can bring in those role models and individuals that can actually help students in that process. So that, that's one piece. I think another piece is she can actually become certified as a trainer in different types of strategies so we don't have to always go to summer institutes. So like as we're onboarding new teachers into Avid, we don't have to send them to somewhere else. She could actually, if, let's say a school is really focusing on literacy, then she could become certified to actually train in that. And then in my mind, she's going to track all of our data for this and help with that. I also see that I would really like us to start developing some feedback tools that we could use, like not as a, wow, you're not using this strategy, but wow, I saw this incredible strategy that was used. So she could start creating a catalog of, here are some really great classrooms to go to. And also supporting that with some outcome data because that becomes, you know, yeah, great, the kids seem to engage, but what did it actually produce? And we need a person who can help with that. So she'll work directly with Nate Mitchell on that as well, so.
Any further questions?
Well, just with that, it seems like we, we have an opportunity with the universities to have those mentors, right? Like we could really.
We haven't capitalized on that.
Yeah, I mean, as you said, I'm like, oh my goodness, like here we are. I'm sure there's plenty of students, college students who would want to do it.
Especially those that might be going into education too. Like as part of a practicum or something like that, so. Okay. Cheryl, do you want to start with policy? Am I up for her policy? I'll have her start while I pull up my other policy stuff.
I'm just going to add that watching what's happening at Canyon Crest with their Avid work has been really inspiring, so I would love eventually we could. So I would love eventually we could get to a K-12 model in a district. I think there's great potential.
I saw Dixon as well, I sat in on now the class and it was amazing.
Yeah, it was really great.
All right, Michelle. She's going to talk about the language access policy and then I'll go through the other two.
Do you need to project?
YouTube project purposes?
Sure. Sorry. No.
So this has been up for review for, I think, at least four weeks, I think, on the website over that. So really just do have any questions before it goes to board meeting tonight. This is the language access policy in response to both Title III law, federal law, and then state law. I'll spell 302.
There's no feedback, is that correct? I haven't seen any.
I haven't received any. They were saying no. Okay, looks like we have no questions. Okay.
Thank you. She's done a ton of work to help us. Okay, next, we'll talk about student travel. This is the second reading for this policy. I'll project here. I don't know why it doesn't remember me. So here's some of the feedback that we have received from different individuals. They appreciated that state travel was encouraged, so to use our state travel vendors, but not necessarily required, as long as we use district and state, we follow those district and state procurement policies. Daryl's going to be responsible for working with Devon to make sure our AEs and our coaches and advisors are all trained in that. And then there was a question about why are we including information about non-district-sponsored trips? So I did a little research on this and we actually do need to have really clear stipulations about what doesn't qualify as a district-sponsored trip. So like if a DLI program is going to go to Spain and they're doing that, we have that written into our policy as to, these are the things that have to happen and you have to demonstrate that you are separating this from the district. And there, and there are consequences for employees that don't do that. If they try to present it as it's a district-sponsored trip when it's not, then, then there's feedback that comes from us in, in that direction. So it ensures that our employees understand clearly what's district-sponsored and what isn't, and the protocols that they have to follow for that. We also, I, I did receive two emails from parents that were frustrated about restricting travel to the continental United States. They really wanted the option of going to Hawaii. So spoke with Devon. A big piece of this is what happens with state risk. So the travel insurance that we have to buy for students increases with the distance that you travel away from Utah. So it can be as much, as little as $7 per student per day, or as much as $50 per student per day. And once we leave the state of Utah, we are no longer under the rules of governmental immunity. So that means anyone can sue us for as much as we want. There are no limits on that liability. So the travel insurance will kick in, but if there is some sort of negligence or something that happens, it can create a significant financial risk to the district. And so this, the Board of Education a few years ago decided that risk going to Hawaii and Alaska was not worth it, right? And so you're traveling across an ocean, you're going to Hawaii, which is full of ocean and awesome activities that state risk hates, like snorkeling and all sorts of things. So. We also have talked about the optics, about what is the purpose of travel? What is the purpose of the opportunities? And can we provide those opportunities for students elsewhere? And it can expose inequities in, in the programs where one school may have access to certain things that another school doesn't. And so, or this school gets a donation and can cover that, that expense whereas another school can't. And they can't keep, you know, the travel at a, at a reasonable cost, then what, what would that look like? So that is our reasoning for doing so. You certainly have the ability to change that if you want to. Procedure one is just about field trips in general. There was a question that came up, why are we providing meals for students on a field trip? Because there was a dollar amount. Because when students are off-campus, we do have to have, we do have to give them access to meals. So a lot of teachers do ask them to bring us back lunch, but we do need to provide them access to something from the cafeteria if that, if that student doesn't show, show up with something. And if you're not doing that, then you've got to purchase it and, and we have to provide that off-campus. We also added point number 11 to ensure that all students are accounted for during the field trip and on buses, just as a specific responsibility of, of the individual. So I, that seems like an obvious thing, but we added it. So. Feedback on procedure two, on overnight trips. The feedback was to change this to a 60-day approval instead of a 45-day approval. I need to tell you that our high schools are not in favor of that extended amount of time because there's a lot of times where something comes up very quickly where, and we could, we could offer exceptions when there are extenuating circumstances. We already do that. But I just wanted you to note that, that we had originally said, let's change it to 60 days, but there is some concern coming from the high schools as a result of that for, for some of the tournaments and things that might come up. And then based on Jennifer's suggestion, she wanted, she suggested that we put the justifications for travel towards the beginning of the document, which seemed to make more sense than having it kind of embedded. Like, why are we doing, that's a good idea to have the rationale. So we did move that to the beginning.
Sorry, can I get clarification? I just want to remember that correctly, that 45, it's approved 45 days ahead of time, right? It's not that they turn in their paperwork 45 days ahead of time, but everything's done in approved 45 days.
Yes, that is correct. So it actually have to be.
They're going to have to start quite a bit earlier than that in order to get it approved.
That is 45 days.
Okay.
So, so that's part of the issue that we're finding right now is that sometimes what's happening is, is an advisor's filling out the paperwork, they're getting it to the athletic director, it's sitting on their desk, it's not getting to the principal, and then it's showing up on my desk like a week before. So we just, that's just some training. I just don't know that, that that's been an expectation in the past. That will be an expectation. And then there was a feedback on the actual application for travel to add the last time the group traveled, where they traveled, and the cost of that. So, so just so that you have an idea, like if it's been two years since that group has traveled and now they're going to New York and it's $2,000, you might be like, okay, that's cool. But if they're going to New York every single year and every single time it's $2,000, that might cause a little bit more pause. So we just made that adjustment on there. So here are some options for you to consider. You can adopt the policy as-is, and in doing so, the accompanying procedures and policy would go into effect for the 2024-2025 school year. Option two, you could remove the restriction for travel in the continental United States only, and you could make that as a motion. You could also return it to a 45-day requirement, remove that 60-day approval, or you could propose any other changes that you so desire. And we could adopt that way. We always want to have that as an option. What questions do you have?
So the continental United States, that would really just be to add in Alaska and Hawaii to possible travel?
Yep. So lower 48.
Yes, what is Daryl, in your opinion, about 45 versus 60-day? Like should, I don't know, I don't, I'm not involved enough to know what's reasonable.
I think just because of the time of year when teams are ready and things like that, they have to get parent approval, right? So I think sometimes they don't even know if they're going to get that until they have an idea of the team and that. So that's why they want 45.
Is that reasonable? I mean, that's a reasonable request.
I, I feel like it is. I know we get concerned about, is that enough time to put money together? The, the trips that tend to cost more money, those individuals are sometimes planning that like 180 days out. And we wrote that in the policy that if they're planning that far out, then they need to do a 90-day update to just, because they're going to be putting in approximate amounts, right? So then at 90 days, within that 45 to 90 day, they would say, okay, this is what the final cost has been. But I agree. I think sometimes too, like even now with the region alignments, there are different, like we have to travel farther for Provo because it's a foray school. And sometimes, you know, we don't know that that's coming or it might change location and so we're doing that more at the la, you know, pretty quickly.
We're in a region with Uwata, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's why.
It's like a two and a half hour drive.
Yeah. So a lot of times when they're going, like especially for wrestling, you don't, you don't want to be going and coming. You, you're, you're trying to establish weight and stuff like that. So it gets tricky.
So I was wondering just what's so important like to have it be 60 days? Like why are we trying to change that from being 45?
I think it was just giving parents enough notice and the, and making sure like if you're really funding for an expensive trip that's like $2,000, I wouldn't want to know just 45 days out as a parent that I got to cough up $2,000 for my kid.
I think when we talked about, we talked just about that the directors are planning ahead. And, right, obviously we know there's going to be a competition or something that comes up last minute, but generally we want them planning ahead, communicating well. Everybody knows ahead of time so they can plan their schedule, their finances, all that kind of stuff.
I'm trying to move it to 45 days.
I'm trying to.
With an encouragement, obviously. I think people want to try to plan ahead when they can. I feel like that, I assume goodwill on that one.
Okay. Well, and it's not, it's only 15 more days, 60 to 45. I mean.
Yeah.
It's not a substantial difference, in my mind.
Okay. Yes, Gina?
Do we need to address the continental United States?
Yes, you probably, you probably need to address that.
I, I think it needs to stay within the continental United States, in my opinion, for the reasons that were listed. I think those are solid reasons. It's not just that we don't want the kids to have fun. I think sometimes people think we're here to squash fun and maybe sometimes we are, but not this time. So I think, I think, I think it just makes me nervous to have them traveling.
Makes Devon very nervous.
There's a concern that's not just about fun from the parent's perspective on this, that's around the opportunity for their, especially with athletes, right? For, for them to have the right recruiting experiences also as other top-tier athletes being recruited. And so I guess I would just hope we just keep being really proactive at looking at the opportunities that we can travel to with our athletes that do provide them those things and encouraging and supporting those experiences for our athletes. Because I, you know, none of us want an athlete to not have the same level of opportunity as an athlete from a different school because they have a different travel policy. And, and I have tried to ask around about that because that's been feedback that we received. And, you know, it's hard to know because every sport is unique and where some of those biggest tournaments are or opportunities are and where that takes place. But, but the way I had it explained to me by a recruiter that I reached out to was that, that every high school athlete does have the ability to be seen by, that they, they try to be very mindful in their practice as recruiters and keep track of where, where the players are that they want to find. And so, you know, hopefully if, if there are cases where people feel that's unfair that we can do what we can to help support that process. And I, I came from a school district before this one that traveled extensively and they went all over the world actually. And as a parent, it became, it was like kind of a slippery slope in terms of what seemed necessary for my kid's education. You know, and so when my oldest of six kids was a freshman in high school, because he was in this highest choir, the choir tour was $6,500. And, you know, I was thinking, is that a precedent? We do it every year? They go on the trip every year to a different country and, you know, and I was wrestling with him, am I a bad parent? And he, you know, they can do fundraising, but as a 14-year-old, do you send them on that trip with the rest, we're all juniors and seniors? There's just a lot of complexities to travel in general and making sure people have a good experience in a lot of different ways. So for that reason, I would support they can also, besides just the risk, but just there's so many other pieces to that, I think, drawing the line there sometimes.
And I think we can provide the opportunities within.
I think, I think we do. I think our coaches do. I know our coaches are really excellent advocates for their athletes.
I know, I don't, Daryl, I don't know if you know the answer to this. I know Alpine does allow travel to Hawaii, or there've been a couple schools that have. I don't believe Nevo does. I know Canyons doesn't. So it's, it's not atypical that, that we're restricting it. It's, it's not like we're out of the ordinary.
Right, I think you're right. I think Alpine actually is a special request, exemption.
Now we will move on to student board members and student advisory council policy 1110 first reading. So I just created that you have the actual policies and procedures and what you'll notice in that is with the original policy, anything that we're changing, I struck out and did in red, so when you see those documents. And then anything that was new that was added will be in blue on the actual policy documents. This PowerPoint is just trying to highlight and summarize some of those things and then you can ask any questions that you have. I want to give a huge shout-out to the policy committee and to Gina and to Daryl. Daryl went and met with the different high schools to kind of talk with their student government advisors and get some feedback. The thing that I want us to think about is that we probably need to look at this year as being a little bit different than, and following our current policy and looking at timelines and then look at this as implementation starting, you know, July 1st or whatever because we don't want to slow down the process. But I'll kind of talk about that more in just a minute. So we did change the phrase student officers to student board members. I think that's what we're traditionally calling them. We also wanted to establish that the student board members will serve as leaders of the student advisory council. So we actually created a procedure two that delineates actually the purpose of the student advisory council and that they, and this policy also directs the superintendent to develop a procedure for the selection of these student advisory council members. I think we've had a really positive experience with that group and we want to keep that as part of our procedure, so. So procedure one, which is about the student board members, we really kind of added a purpose of allowing student members to participate in board meetings and other assigned activities. I think initially that statement was about participating in the governance piece, which implies a, a voting component. I think the feedback was since they're not elected individuals, we want feedback and we want them to state that and provide that and solicit that feedback, but not necessarily a voting member even symbolically. We also on eligibility clarified the 10 to 12-hour per month commitment because I think it's important that people understand what they're signing up for. This is not just a half-hour meeting that you're going to go to twice a month. And then we did raise the cumulative GPA requirement to a 2.7, which matches with the student government requirements. We'll talk more about why we tried to align that. Under role, we did put that they will attend study sessions and business meetings, participate in additional trainings and meetings with the state so that they understand they have an opportunity to go to, say, USBA conferences and serve on one of three committees. And we listed those there as being the three that we thought were the most appropriate and probably the most interesting to students. Capital facilities doesn't sound really interesting, but it actually is with all of the construction and things and plywood schools that we have kids attending in. Expectations and responsibilities, we added what it means to participate in board meetings by saying like, you'll look over the agenda items and then comment, ask questions. You guys, Max and Willie, you've done an outstanding job. You've kind of, you've kind of set the bar for like everybody else, so they're kind of toast. So I just want you to know that. So thank you. And then we added a few more specifics about their role in their specific student government classes so that we're going to be communicating with those student government advisors. We know that student government advisors have specific requirements of students in those classes. But we also want to communicate, like they need to understand that board members are spending 10 to 12 hours, so don't add that on top of all of the other responsibilities they're giving these student government kids, making sure that that swaps out for something else that they're requiring there. And that there's more deliberate training and support from the sponsoring board member and the administrator, which right now is Gina and Daryl, and so that we are more deliberate in what that looks like. The application will be entirely online. There will be no paper version of it unless somebody asks. We thought about not requiring letters of recommendation, that just adds stress to teachers. We will just ask the students for an email, then we'll generate an email form and they'll fill out the form that will just ask them to fill in some questions. So it doesn't have to be quite so formalized. And then they will grant us permission to access their transcript and attendance records so they don't have to go and secure that. And then with feedback from the student advisory council, they felt like 50 high school students' signatures was reasonable in that. And then, selection and announcement, that we would review the applications, determine a group of finalists. Like, if there's a ton of applications that come in, they would be interviewed by board members. And we would include the two student government advisors in that process. And that we would like those applications to run simultaneously as student government selections, so that those selections are made by April first. And the commentary from the student government teachers is they really want these individuals to be able to attend leadership camp at Utah State or at SUU, wherever they go. They can't make those reservations if we're picking it so late. They want them to have student government sweaters, so they feel a part of that class. That gets delayed. They, they can work with us this year, but they would just like it to be part of that process in the future. And then, procedure two, that student board members will lead a student advisory council. Really, where we're getting additional information about student perspectives, the eligibility is good attendance and disciplinary record, same as what we have for student board members. We put in there a two-point-seven cumulative GPA preferable, because they are missing school one to two hours per month. But we wanted to be able, you'll notice in that it talks about working with the principal. If they really feel passionate about a student that should have an opportunity to serve, and let's say they have a two-point-five GPA because they failed a class as a freshman and now they got their act together as a senior, do we really want to make it that punitive in that way? So. The student advisory council or SAC members will be chosen by the principal. And we just offered some criteria. These are not like restrictions in any way. We want them to be passionate about education, current events, politics, making a change, and hopefully representative of different groups across the school. But we don't want to say you have to have a student from this group and a student from this group. We really want them to be able to pick the individuals that they think are going to represent student voices. Student board members would create the agenda based on the Board of Education seeking student feedback. And they would provide that feedback. They'd be chosen by September first. And then, we were informed by our middle school student council members that if we made this sound more fun with food and a party, it would be more likely that students would participate. So, we will establish a retreat with obviously some very clever types of things and some great food.
They were very adamant about the food.
They were very adamant about the food. It was pretty funny. So, our next step is that we would want to present this policy and procedures to our high school principals and student government advisors. They are made available online for input and feedback. Policy committee would then review that feedback, make further recommendations. This would be brought back at the April sixteenth board meeting for the second reading. In the meantime, we will still get an application made available. I believe we said by April first is when we're starting it? I can't remember what our dates were. The sooner we can do it, the better, right? And, and try to get that process going. So, we have lined out a slightly different timeline just for this year, but moving forward, this is what we felt would be helpful. What questions do you guys have?
I got a piece of, I got a question, some feedback. The whole idea with eligibility is in, where, the point number two, and we put this up there, the student must have a good attendance record. That caught my eye, because what does that mean? And I wondered why we didn't define what that means. And we have a pretty easy opportunity to define that, because I know both the schools have like their attendance, right, their point system.
Attendance eligibility, whatever that is.
So, maybe we want to be more specific that way or something?
School-based attendance.
It just felt really, yeah, well nonspecific, right?
We did that on purpose.
Well, I figured there was a reason.
I, I got worried that we were, we actually had a pretty lively conversation with it. I got worried that, that, because I, at first, I was hardcore. I was like, you can't miss more than four days any quarter. And I'm like, you have just gotten rid of fifty percent of the kids that could apply for this. See? They're nodding now, so.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's what I was kind of thinking.
No, I, I'm not worried.
Are you both like within your points, so like you can attend dances and stuff? Do you know what I mean? Like, if that's, like, so maybe that is more reasonable? Like, if you're, you're in line with, you're eligible.
Well, the thing is with those, the eligibility thing, is that it is really easy to get out of that. Like, it, say you were just gone for like two days or whatever, and you did not get those excuses, you really could ruin that. So, maybe something that's more like aimed to be within that, like aimed to have good attendance.
Part of that is just when you're applying, when you look at your history.
Or like, check, within like a certain amount of time, you like, we check it and then if they're not in that, like, if they've been in it for that, for a certain amount of time, like longer than like a week or so, like, that's when. Because there, there's opportunities for us to get rid of it. Like, they have like arc makeup classes for like, you can make up like half an hour to an hour and a half.
If for the past three years, they have been ineligible for things because of attendance, then that's probably a bigger red flag. And then, that they've missed some things for one term.
So, we don't, right, take a snapshot. Like a cumulative GPA, we want some.
What is your attendance trend?
Because I, I do feel like, though, if you, if you are, you know, if you ride that line closely and, and say you're not eligible to run the track meet or to, you know what I mean, whatever, then also are you, is it a good idea for you to miss class and be a part of the student?
Right.
So, I, I mean, I think the effort to make sure, I mean, there's, there's a learning curve for the student, there's a learning curve for parents. We all know I'm one of them who has to remember to call in. But all of those are the important lessons, and if this is what helps motivate us to get back in compliance, I think it's, I actually.
Well, and I feel like we've been trying to emphasize attendance. I don't know. I mean, I figured there was a reason, and if we really feel strongly, or someone really feels strongly that we don't want to define that, I guess that's fine. I just, I was like, what on earth does that mean? Because if you ask a, you know, a fifteen-year-old versus a thirty-year-old.
Yeah, I go to school half the time. It's very good.
We even got into the discussion of school excuse or parent excused. Which my daughter has, whenever we get, we have the discussions about, how has Miss Moore missed many, that my child has missed that many days of school? Because she gets sick and I choose not to send her. So, not that my child needs to be the number one consideration, but I think.
But as long as you're excusing it, that's fine.
But part of the conversation was parents, it would be school, only school excused absences instead of parent excuse, because sometimes parents, they'll want their kid, even if they don't know where their kid was, they'll excuse it, so they have the opportunity.
And, and, and you end up with actually an equity problem there, because the parents who know how to, to work that system and some parents don't. And they're like, no, I'm not calling and excusing that. I'm not going to do that. But they, but maybe in so doing, they don't realize they just made their kid ineligible for something, you know?
They can't make themselves.
True. Oh, fair point. Fair point. Good job, Jennifer.
That's why I figure the school's attendance system has taken into consideration all of those factors.
I agree.
So, if we align it with the school's attendance.
I will say that when we have the students come in, they completely disagree with the school's attendance. I'm not saying that. Right, but I do think this is something we take back and, and discuss with quality committee and come up with some, with some kind of more specific guideline.
So, how I see it written now, I don't necessarily have a problem with. I don't necessarily mind getting stricter either. But I see it as, we're saying this is what, the qualifications we're going to look at when we're determining who we're selecting. And then the people on the selection committee will have all that information and be able to take each case.
Yeah.
For its whole, to whole picture.
It's a piece of the puzzle that we consider.
Right, so, so that committee will look at their attendance and say, well, I don't know, that is good to me, or that's not good to me. Is this a deal breaker or not, based on everything we're looking at?
Well, then maybe we want to say the following additional eligibility criteria are considered rather than required. Because that sounds what, it sounds like more if we're considering all these things, we're not necessarily requiring them. Is that right?
I, well, I would still say good attendance is required, but my definition of good attendance might be a little different than yours, but we, we talk it all out.
If you have like, well, how the students had in the past, like, you know, like you said, the information, like, you know, that each person can make a choice based on that.
It's even something you can bring up in the interview. We noticed that you've had this attendance. Do you have a specific explanation, right? It can be addressed.
Well, and I guess I want to put my trust in the interview committee and the people who are choosing students as well. I mean, that's fine, too.
I don't think it's a bad idea for us to look and see if we can, if we can tighten it a little bit. If we can't, then whatever, but we can look at it, I think.
Yeah, perfect. Okay?
I, I would, would hope that students could get input in this. So, I don't know, you guys can email as many students as possible or how we include students to have input in this. That, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I had a question about that, and that is, how many students actually know about it? And how can we get that word out? I, I agree and I like that, that principals are, you know, helping to suggest students. But there are a lot of students unknown by the principal who are remarkable and important voices. And I think it would be great if they even had an exposure to what this is well enough to where they had an idea of whether or not they'd be interested and they could, a way they could say, hey, would you consider proposing me? Like, I, I don't know, I just wonder if we're communicating that well enough to our students.
So, one of the things that Shauna doesn't know she's going to have to do is she's going to have to see some video footage of Will and Max. And then, we're going to put together a, she's going to put together a promotional video, not we. She's going to put together a promotional video that then we could push out, that they could show in different classes and talk about, what is this? And we could do it in a clever way, like, what does it mean to be a student board member? What do I do? Why is this important? How has this enriched my senior year or, you know? So, we can, we can do something like that.
And what is the student advisory council and how do we get involved?
Because we were sorely lacking in that, but we knew we were. We didn't know what it was going to look like.
But that one we have until August to put together. This one, we got to put together now.
But there was discussion also around, because I think it was Max who said that a teacher recommended you to do it, without you? So, we talked about getting it to teachers as well. So, they may see some students that others might not, and so educating teachers as well.
And I like Lisa's point, the clarity on the student advisory council procedure, that it says the principal will. And I took that to mean they're going to oversee, that they're not necessarily the one that picks all the people. But, yeah, just maybe clarifying.
Yep, we can do that.
I think the student, we talked about the student board members being part of the discussion with the principal on that.
So, we can have the draft policy up on the website tomorrow, so these guys can start sharing it.
You got it. You heard that, Kayla, with Shauna, right?
So, I do have one other thing, which is I, I understand why we're moving it to April first the next time. I, I do still have the same concerns that we talked about previously about separating it from student government stuff. It's not, it's not the same. It's not, I mean, it's, I have them interacting with legislators. And so, it's like, I feel a little more responsibility over that. So, I just want to make sure that we're teasing out that we are getting students who are actually interested in, because this is, this is different, right, than the other positions. So, I just want to make sure that we're mindful of that. I want to do with what student government teachers are requesting as well, but I think we need to figure out a way to make sure that we're getting the students that we need to be interested in.
I agree. I, I think from the feedback we've received, they feel like that there are appointed positions at the schools, that there are going to be kids. And I think it really is going to be key about getting teachers to identify, like, here are the kids that are going to be perfect for this particular thing. Could you encourage them to do this? I think that's going to be huge.
I was just going to say, withholding it, like after elections, you will get a bunch of students who ran for something and then still want to be instituted government. And so, then they're going to apply for it. And like, and I don't know if that's necessarily the applicant pool that you really, really want. And there's also the aspect that if I'm a student who really doesn't want to do student gov, it doesn't be framed as, like, you'll be in student gov, but that's also, that's not your primary thing. You're going to board meetings, you're doing this, and student gov is just an added part. You're not just in student gov.
Yeah, it seems like even the, the running process is different. If they have, if student has to look, okay, I got to fill out this application, I, you know, my transcript. Like, there's just an extra piece to this process that would, I think, if you really weren't interested, would potentially deter from going through that, if, if that wasn't something that was in your wheelhouse.
Okay? All right, thank you.
All right, excellent. We will now go ahead and have a legislative recap given by our LECOM team. We're going to turn it over to Jennifer to start us out.
Okay. I recognize we're behind on time, so we'll try to make up some time here, but we'll have time for questions if you want. But I know that you guys have been kind of on top of this with us throughout the session. But now that the legislative session with the state is finished, we just want to report on the work of our committee as well as some of the implications for what the legislators determined, how that can affect us. But knowing that there's still a lot more for our superintendent, business administrator to learn about that. And we'll get more details on some of those bills as that comes forward to us from the state. So, okay, so, it's attached to board docs, so you can start looking at it while we're pulling that up. Who's? I don't know. It's, it's one of you. Okay. So, some of the things that our committee did this session, we kept track of the education bills. We updated our spreadsheets weekly, that helped us to be able to communicate and know what was happening and taking positions on different bills. And then, we've got some ideas in mind for next year, of how to even be better at that, keeping up to date with that. Terry did a great job keeping us up to date on the House and Senate Education Committee meetings with their agendas and when they were. And we tried to often watch and even ahead of time, if we saw certain things on the agenda that we felt strongly yea or nay on, we contacted Representative Clancy, who is a provo representative, who's on the committee, and then some of the others as well, committee members. We reached out to legislators about our positions. And on major bills, we asked more than just us to do that, but all the board members were encouraged to do that on major bills. And as far as contacting legislators go, we've been trying to build a relationship with them before the session. We're continuing that. In fact, we just had our meeting yesterday as a committee. And, okay, what are we going to do in the next few months to reach out, to invite them into our schools? To educate them more on things that are happening and things like that, so. And then, we had two days on the Hill. So, the first one was when everybody on our board who was available that day, five of us and Wendy, we went up and we went to committee meetings and met with most of our delegation, our provo delegation, which was fantastic. That was a great conversation. Oh, there you go, yeah. There we are. And then, you can go to the next photo. Then, two weeks later, we were able to bring up our student board members, Max and Will, and five other students from our high schools. And had just a really great day. We attended the House Education Committee meeting and watched that whole process. We talked with our legislators. Representative Clancy gave us a tour behind the scenes and introduced them to other representatives as well. And then, we had some floor time where we watched the work happening on the Senate and the House floor, so, great day there. So, okay. Next, just a little bit legislative overview. Overall, you can see a lot of the bills happen every year, education-related. It's a lot to keep track of, so that's why it's so hard to keep that spreadsheet up to date. And then, yeah, if any legislators are watching, it'd be great if we could just not have so many education bills, right? Focus our work.
Well, and you're seeing these numbers, but this doesn't mean that's all that came up. Like, there was a lot more than this that didn't pass, so it's, it's crazy.
Yeah. The Joint Legislative Committee of the Utah School Board Association and the Superintendents Association met weekly during the session, nine times total since beginning of January. Those are like three-hour meetings every time. Lots of fun. We discussed ninety-five bills plus the proposed constitutional amendment. And as a body, the JLC supported forty bills and eighty-five percent of those passed. JLC opposed thirty-five bills, and yet fifty-seven percent of those passed anyway. Interesting there. A little bit about the budget, you can see that we're funded for growth and inflation, which is in statute. And then, they gave an additional one-point-two percent on top of that. They gave us some increased at-risk, which is, our district, we've been trying to talk to our legislators about the importance of that at-risk add-on. And we're grateful for that and hope to just keep seeing more every year, because it's still a long way from where we'd like to be, to meet the needs that we have for our students. There was a bill about market-informed compensation for teachers, and they gave a hundred and fifty million one-time funding for that over three years. And that is one of the bills that JLC opposed. A couple of different pilot programs that, I don't know, some of it we're already doing, coaching, and yet the red tape and the, I'm not quite sure that the the value is there, like, the program's fleshed out enough, but apparently, we're moving forward with it. So, they gave forty million dollars additional in ongoing funds to Utah Fitzall Scholarship, which that scholarship is now just starting, like opening up applications, so the first people in the program will start this coming fall. The year before, they gave, what was it? Fifty million?
No, forty-two.
Forty-two, oh, yeah, this year. Oh, yes. This year was gonna be 50.
So, so is it 82 now?
So 82 million set aside for that. And each student in that gets $8,000 of the state funding. And you can see here, the state funding for a public school student is about half of that, 4,400.
It's also per student. So if you have more than one kid in your family, you could ultimately get lots more than that.
See, 101 million for the school property insurance, which they anticipate that that's gonna go up a lot this year. Stipend for future educators, that was a bill that we were in support of and it did pass. This is to help our student teachers who currently, a lot of them are living on rice and beans and maybe not even that. Trying to, or they're working another job while trying to teach, which is really difficult to do. So this will allow them to be able to, to focus on being a good student teacher and have money.
For one year or one time to be spread out over a year?
It's one semester, however.
For, for the individual, it's one time, it's from the one time fund is what that means.
I see. Okay.
So this is again, like a good idea that they're like, we're gonna put some money towards and then we'll see how it goes. And then hopefully another year they'd fund it again.
6,000 to 9,000 depending on how many student teachers you have.
Yeah. Based, yeah, per student that you name. There's another program, I wanna prove these bills, Mentoring Supporting Teacher Excellence and Reapignment. And that one is another, almost 5 million. So what we're seeing is there's a lot in the education fund, the, oh gosh, the name's escaping me.
Stabilization.
Stabilization, thank you. Stabilization fund that they're like, oh, we have so much in there, it's okay if we spend some of that down. And so we're seeing a lot of one time or pet project kinds of bills. What I hope we could work with legislators on over time is to maybe change the metric. So since we're feeling like that fund's doing pretty well, can we put more into the ongoing funds so we could increase teacher salaries or meet some of our ongoing needs and put more towards that and less towards these projects that might end? Like the market inform compensation could be giving teachers, you know, 10 or 20, $30,000 extra per year in their salaries. And then when that three years is up, if he doesn't find more funding for that program, then either their salary goes back down or we as districts have to figure out how to pay for all of them. So that can be really tricky. HB 415, school fees, changed it so that we can't charge a general fee, curricular or co-curricular fees. And it's a phase, but Devin, I was just reading, I thought it was phased for three years, but there's something in the bill that says 25, 26 year. Do you know?
The 25, 26 year is the year that we have to implement.
Okay. So we have to start the phase. Okay.
Yeah, it was phased in one of the original bills, but then in the last sub that they had, they made it 25, 26.
So it's not phased. We just have to be gone?
If we have to be done 25.
Okay. So what I have there is correct.
It is correct.
Okay. So they allocated 35 and a half million in the one time fund, but just for reference, it takes a lot more than that to totally eliminate, which means districts have to figure out how to make up for the rest of it. So we've got there that our district, once that 35 million is gone, it's about 750,000 a year that we'll have to figure out. Tyler Clancy, Representative Clancy, worked on educational professional time to align the hours at the beginning of the year to make sure that the money reimbursed keeps up with the increased salaries for our teachers. So it's 74 million that goes towards that. And they were, I checked, I double-checked the budget that I saw said 74.
Excellent.
Yeah. And then they're working on a new formula for our necessary existence in small schools that I think most people are pretty supportive of, felt overall was a lot better. But then they said, hey, that's gonna take a little bit of funding to make that transition. And they did not find 27 million to do that. So they're on the old formula for a little more time. You might be able to tell how I feel about that. They can't find that 27 million for small schools, but they can find all these other pet projects. So we're not gonna go over all of these bills, but we've got here some of the bigger, more important ones to us and then how our local legislators voted. And for the public who's watching, if you have questions, I think as a team here, as a board, we've talked about a lot of these already, so you know. But I mean, it might look like, why in the world did we oppose school safety amendments? The red means we opposed it, green means we supported it. Generally, we support school safety. We love a lot of things about that bill. I think a lot of it is good, but for example, in that one, the school guardian program, having an armed person volunteer, like we do not feel good about that. Most parents we've talked to do not feel good about it. And so that's why we opposed that bill, for example. As you guys look through these, are there any bills you had specific questions about? I will say on the second slide of bills, HB 303, school curriculum requirements, this was kind of what the legislature was looking at doing, how we, we addressed ours in the policy recently, our inclusive learning environments. This was their way of addressing it. We didn't like their approach. And you can see there the votes, the Senate is NA because it did not pass in the House. So we're grateful to our legislators who voted against that. And for the most part, we put bills up here that did pass, but I wanted to share that one just so that we could recognize that that is a bill that we're grateful it didn't go through and wanted to share how our legislators voted on that one. Any questions about any of the voters? Okay. And then we also want a little last one on that third slide there. FB 225, that was Senator Bramble and Representative Thurston. And that was in direct response to some of the things we've come across where how our city boundary has adjusted, but it did not automatically adjust our school district boundary. And so we've had to do some extra work to do that. And so in the future, this will adjust it automatically unless the affected school districts agree together, for some reason they don't want it adjusted, otherwise it will adjust. So we're grateful for that.
Okay.
All right. And then the last thing we wanna talk about with the committee with you guys today is SJR 10. So this, the Senate Joint Resolution 10 was, happened in the 2023 session a year ago, but it's going to come on the ballot this fall and as a constitutional amendment proposal. So what it will do, if it passes, is it moves the statutory language that right now that growth and inflation is automatically given to us at the beginning of the session, but that is just in statute and it would move it to the constitution, a constitutional protection. At the same time, it would remove the constitutional earmark that designates the income tax fund that right now the income tax fund can only go towards education, children's services, and services with people with disabilities. It would open up that fund to everything else, all the state's budgetary needs after they have taken care of education. But it's very vague of what that means, taking care of the education, other than that growth and that inflation. So the JLC has been talking about this over the last year, but at the end of last session, they did put forth, hey, we conditionally support this idea. You can move to the next slide. But if you meet these conditions in the 2024 session. And so this is the list of conditions that we are looking for. We're looking for increased funding for public education beyond inflationary increases. As we talked about at the beginning, we got 1.2%. I think some people might say, okay, check that. I think a lot of us in education would say that then you gave us some unfunded mandates like the school fees. How are we gonna meet all of our other needs? I don't know that that was the intent of what we meant by increased funding. We're looking for increased emphasis on local control and flexibility for boards, recognizing that school boards are elected by our communities and we should be making majority of the decisions for our schools. As, as a group here, as we've talked about it, we feel that most of the bills have not emphasized that local control and there's been ones that take that away from us. We have had a few bills that reduced administrative demand. We've also had some other bills that added more. We've already talked a little bit about some unfunded mandates we've gotten this year. So, and we did, number five, we didn't see correct. We did not have the inflationary adjustment to our certified tax rate. So again, that can be up to everybody's individual interpretation, how well the legislature did with that. But I think the consensus on our committee is they did not meet those requirements for support. And we are concerned, you can go to the last slide, that if this constitutional amendment passes in the fall, that as good as that will be to have the guaranteed growth and inflation, that that will become a ceiling instead of a floor, instead of a starting point. What more can we get beyond that so we can meet all these other needs that we have? That it will be like, oh, we give you your growth, we give you your inflation, now we're gonna move on and go fund other things and, and not be able to meet the needs. And I personally feel that with the earmark the way it is right now, they may not give us all the money that's in the income tax fund, but they're more likely to give us about the growth and inflation because they can only use it for a certain number of things. They're more likely to give out to those things. Zaini, have any comments or questions?
I just wanna point out one thing. On the ballot in November, it will not be labeled SJR 10. The lieutenant governor's office has not told us what it will be titled.
It'll be constitutional amendments and then a letter.
A, B, C, or D. Or, well, it'll probably be A, B, or C. We're not really sure. And we have no idea when that will.
We'll get more updates.
And one more quick thing. We got 3.8% increase for growth and inflation. How did they come up with that 3.8%? Because I feel like inflation has been way more than 3.8.
That's been seven.
Right. And so if we're, if we're passing this constitutional amendment, but they're giving us, they're already giving us a way lower percent than what is actual.
Yeah. So they have a metric, and I don't remember if that's off my head, but it's like a certain number of years, like the last three or four years. Do you know that or something?
But it's, it's not the actual inflationary rate. That's, I'm not sure how many years they're using.
So in theory, when inflation's high, maybe we're not actually keeping up with inflation. But then if inflation goes down because of the metric, we might get a little more than what the inflation was the next year. But the last few years, that number has not kept up with the actual inflation.
So does that worry anybody with SJR 10? Cause that worries me. I'm like looking at 3.8 is like, 3.8 in my budget wouldn't cover my groceries if I was only inflating my grocery bill 3.8%, right? So.
What also worries me is the conversation I heard about that a legislator told one of our business administrators in the state that that's okay that my bill doesn't have any funding for it. We're already giving you 3.8% so you can find it from there. And to which the answer is that 3.8% is for staying the same.
3.8% gets us to zero.
It gets us to zero in theory if we're taking with inflation. Not for your additional things in your bill.
Right.
So will that keep happening?
The answer to that is yes, it will keep happening. Because it has been happening and it will continue to happen.
Yeah. Okay.
And then if we don't have at least that designation, then they can only use that funding for certain things. That worries a lot of us.
I just wanna poke on. I was gonna just say thank you first of all. I thought it was so helpful to have the spreadsheet and to be able to follow along. I was joined like two different meetings over Zoom and in one of them, we had our student board member make a comment as well as board member McCabe. And I didn't even know that was gonna happen. I was just like so thrilled, like, oh, our, our provo presence here. So I, I just was really impressed with how you kept us informed. But then also just knowing how much work that was, I just shout out to all the legislature though, for the work they did, because these are just the education bills. And they had all of the bills to try to be informed about, track, listen to different people's perspectives. And, and I'm really grateful for everyone who used to do that work.
Will you remind me the mechanism of statutory language as opposed to it being the constitution? It can, is it a law that can be easily changed? Is that correct?
Yeah. So statutory means it's in law.
Yes.
But then if the next legislative session, if enough of the legislators said, hey, we're gonna run a bill and we're gonna change it, they could change it.
Through the bill process.
And the constitution has that protection because it has to go out to the vote of the people and it's a harder process to do.
Okay.
Any other questions for Jennifer?
Thank you for presenting that for us.
Thank you all.
I said this last board meeting, but I'll say it again. LECOM committee is no joke. Legislative session is no joke. This is so much time and energy I've invested in here. So thank you to everyone who put so much time and energy into this. This is a lot of work, so much work. And honestly, I feel like our school district and our school board has gotten better and better at keeping up with this. Before, when I first started on the board, it wasn't quite the same. So this is, this is a big deal. This is hard work.
Our second year is a legislative committee, right? Like an official go out and.
Maybe. Well, yes. Our second real one, yeah. Kinda had one.
We always had people, like board members, interested, but we were never organized. And so this is really, this is a big, this is a big deal and a really positive step. So thank you.
I think we need Shauna to do a video of you guys in like eight.
Nope.
And I did not catch us up at all.
All right. Large purchase requests with Devin.
So there are four of them, so I'm not gonna catch us up either.
That's okay.
The first one is for the intercom system at Timpanogus and Lakeview for 154,000, $443.63. That one is just updated, outdated system that is not supported with the current operating The second one is for a handicap accessible vehicle for East Bay Post High. It will also, it can also be used by a student of provo high who also needs to be transported with his wheelchair. So this process has been going on for about four months, five months, I think. They wanted a 10 passenger van, but those vans are really, really hard to find and we're not allowed to use anything that can fit 11 or more, including the driver. So they were able to, they, it's not, it's an eight passenger van, but it's roomy and can do two. There's a couple of different configurations that can use, so there can be up to two wheelchairs and still fit a few people in the car.
Can I ask a question to me?
Absolutely.
I feel like we, did we just vote on something similar to this?
The box truck for the, the child nutrition and then a truck. We did, oh, we did for, yes, for Timview. So we did a van for Timview so they can transport back and forth and use it for their programs. That was, that was a few months ago, but yes, thank you for the reminder. But this one is specific for a handicap accessible. So there's that one. Then there is switches for Shoreline and Wasatch. This one is 292,000, $224.58. And that, those are just the new switches for the new schools.
What, like light switches?
No, no. Network switches.
Network. Okay. I'm like, I, and I can't tell the contractor.
A lot of money for light switches.
That's a lot of switches.
So why is it itemized by itself?
Those are network switches for the schools.
Okay.
And then the last one is for the cameras. So there's two different vendors, so I can buy, but I combined them into one because it's for the same thing. It's for 45,000 for Triphase Electric and 365,000, $107.30 to Stone Security. And those are some replacements for outdated cameras and then new cameras with the new school safety grant that we received, so that there are additional cameras throughout the district. Okay. Any questions? Yes.
Are these expenses ones that we had already expected and budgeted for?
The switches, yes. Those were already in the budget and Chad's budget. The part of the cameras, yes, because those are, some of them are just a normal replacement. The others are the new grant that we just received from the state with the, the large vehicle, the handicapped accessible vehicle. It was one that we talked about at the beginning of the year in the capital budget, buying vehicles for each of the, the schools so that maybe we could keep those updated. And then the intercom system is also a part of the.
Thank you. Any other questions for Devin?
All right. Great. Number 643. Do you think we can do 10 minutes, actually 10 minutes? 9:43, do you think we can do 10 minutes, actually 10 minutes?
Oh, yeah.
Here we go.
Excellent.
FTE, update.
There you go, let me screen your hair. Okay, here we go. So part of this is to show that we're, we're changing a little bit based on some of the discussions that we've had of the board and district leadership in terms of making sure that we're putting our resources towards the schools that have the greatest needs. So I just wanted to make, and this is mostly for our public so that they're understanding what these acronyms stand for because they're very much edu-speak, but they're not necessarily things that people outside of education might understand. So an FTE stands for full-time equivalent. One FTP equals one full-time teacher with benefits, 186-day contract and average cost of $95,000, depending on the experience of the teacher. One FTE could also be individuals who have contracts that are longer than 186 days and their cost is different based on their assignment and their salary schedule. So like custodial staff might be on a 242 or a 245 day, administrators 242, instructional coaches might be a 196 or a 206. So obviously their contracts would be a little bit more expensive. They would still be considered one FTE, but the cost is more.
And just for clarity, that cost, does that include the insurance, et cetera?
Yep, yep. And then WPU is what we use to describe weighted per pupil unit, which is how the legislature funds education. This year it'll be $4,494 per student for the 2024, 2025 school year. So our funding is based on enrollment. So if our enrollment is stagnant or declines, then we do have to take that into account as, as we're distributing FTE. So what we have done in the past is, and, and what we continue to do this year is that we have an FTE-based model. So for every 27 and a half students, we do one FTE at the elementary, 28 and a half students, one FTE at the secondary. Independence High School is different, they're at 25 equals one FTE. And so I forgot to put that in there, but that, that, there is a different amount. So we distributed this FTE-based amount on Friday, March 1st to all principals. And huge shout out to Devin and Steve for all of their work in putting this together, looking at projections for the following year and saying, okay, this is just based on your enrollment, this is what you're likely to get. In the past, then we distributed this FTE according to enrollment and then added to every school kind of a budget amount. So a dollar amount that came out of class size reduction funds primarily is the, is the budget that we were using. So the amount was given to the schools in a dollar amount per student. So schools that have larger student populations received more funding. And schools with greater needs, if they were smaller particularly, did not. And so their budgets would be tiny and a school with a large enrollment would have a very large budget. So we shifted this process in our discussion and, and captured that class size reduction money and, and distributed it according to an FTE equity model to try to look at saying that smaller class sizes are going to benefit students who have more needs and we can push that money to the schools that have students that, that, that do have those more needs, so greater needs. So awarded the FTE instead of a dollar amount, mostly because we would really like our schools to start focusing more on tier one instruction rather than let's hire a billion instructional assistants. That can be helpful in some cases, don't get me wrong. They're, they're super helpful particularly in tier two and tier three. They can be helpful to teachers. But the concern that we have is that, that we're not getting this kind of equity across the district. We're seeing some schools where class sizes are much larger and other schools will have smaller class sizes because that's where they put their money and then the school chooses to have a bunch of instructional assistants instead. We want to focus on that tier one instructional, what's happening with the teacher. So these are the factors that we landed on that would create additional, that would generate additional FTE for school. So automatically you got an extra FTE if you're labeled as a highly impacted school. There are four, Tempanogus, Spring Creek, Franklin, and Independence. So automatically out of the gate, they get an additional FTE. Then we calculated how many students are at each of the schools that are, ML stands for multilingual learner, that are levels one and two. That means their language capacity is still developing. And we attributed a higher amount of money. So we're, we're attributing basically a portion of an FTE based on the number of students and, and that's a portion at a higher level than multilingual students that are at levels three and four. And then we also went in and at the school, we took their free lunch numbers and then we added additional FTE because our free lunch students tend to be more transient. There tends to be greater gaps in their learning and educational experiences. And so we wanted to put that into place as well. We, we had a whole bunch of factors listed, like there were a ton that we could have considered through this. These were the ones that our MTSS group landed on as probably having the greatest impact in making sure the money's going to the schools that have the greatest challenges. And then we did commit, because we were committing to Avid, that we would produce an automatic 0.5 FTE for those four secondary schools because they have to offer those electives and have a site coordinator at each school. So if we actually distributed this, it would be 60 additional FTE required across all levels, which would be an additional $5.7 million that would be required to distribute that. So there would be 40 additional FTE at the elementary, 20 at the secondary, and we don't have the funding to do that. So what we did was we took our class size reduction and decided that we would, we could afford to apportion 15 additional FTE out across all levels, so that was 25%. It is important to remember that our elementary schools are already receiving a bump for DLI and CAS and for grade level minimums. Like as soon as they hit 32, we bump to, you know, because you don't want to start having massive class sizes. And then for secondary, we'll bump once they hit 35, then we'll generate an additional FTE. So with that enrollment, then we added those equity factors to give the school their total FTE. Their instructional coach, their social worker, their counselors, their assistant principals, and their principal do not come out of that total. This is purely for classroom teachers only. And then the budgets that are not touched was class size reduction for music. We did not touch that budget at all. We felt like if we were going to touch that, we would need to have, that would need to be a directive that would be given from the board as we're budgeting things because that would, I, I think that would be something that we're going to have a lot of opinions about across our district. TSSA and land trust budget's still completely within the school control. We have early learning money, this K3 money, that is still going to be awarded to schools. And then they create an improvement plan that aligns with Title I. Title I is for low-income students, Title III is for multilingual students. And that gets awarded through Michelle and they create a plan and then she awards that money accordingly. So those budgets are still available to principals for instructional assistance, for behavior supports, for wellness rooms, whatever their school community councils and their school leadership teams are directing them to. So why the change? First and foremost, to focus on tier one instruction and really to create a systematic and transparent approach that we can generate the formula, show a school why they got the FTE that they did and it doesn't become based on the negotiating ability of the principal. Like, you know, you're going to have some people that are really good at wheeling and dealing or providing treats or whatever. We want to make sure it's really consistent in that way. We also need to recognize that we do not have access to ESER money or CARES money, which was that emergency money that was coming in from federal and state sources. And, and that's gone. And so, yes, schools are going to feel it. There is no question. When principals are panicking, they're like, my FTE went down. It absolutely did go down because a lot of that ESER and CARES money was going to help support with additional teachers to lower those class sizes. So no longer are they getting like a dollar amount. The, the other piece of this is I got concerned when we were giving principals a dollar amount that they were trying to keep the cheapest teachers. We want the best teachers. I want you to worry less about what their salary is and keep the people that are going to be the very best. Worry less about, well, this instructional assistant costs me more, so I'm going to keep this one and, no. I don't, I don't want that to, I, I want it to be that we're really looking at what the, what the needs of the school are. And then we're really trying to support, in particular, the needs of our multilingual students. Am I listening towards, that's just what I hear at every single level over and over again. We're addressing the concerns that are expressed by teachers in terms of the needs of students. But all of this, we're trying to look at, we also want to make sure that we're creating a salary increase for our teachers as we go into negotiations. And our expectation is that these resources are being utilized to support students in these categories. And our TSSA and land trust monies can be used for additional teachers, they could be used for behavior supports or instructional aides. So here are some of the questions. We're a highly impacted school with these factors dominating. Why did my FTE go down? Because enrollment went down, we're trying to balance our budget, we're trying to put a lot of that money towards salaries for employees. We, we could increase the FTE if we agreed to a lower salary increase for teachers. So that's something that, that we'll have to negotiate with the association about. What happens if more students move in over the summer and the first month of school? Remember that we award FTE and the state awards this money based on October 1 count. So we will accommodate that if that happens. And then what do I do if I have to reduce my staff in general? That doesn't happen for teachers. They usually have to be assigned to a different grade level or take on a different assignment. We just don't replace a teacher that's leaving. We do have a situation of some of our part-time aides are 29-hour aides that would be not asked to return until we can solidify that funding. So they're just being notified that we have a funding situation. And then as the principal can work through some things and as we work through negotiations, they may be hired back very, that, that's very possible. How could we add FTE to each school? Our initial budgeting is based on a 5% salary increase for all employees. We could create different increases for different groups, we could reduce that amount. And, and then that frees up more money for instructional assistance or additional FTE. So that's something that we'll have to negotiate with. And then obviously you as a board can direct us to have different budgeting priorities. So some of the conversations we've been having is just doing an autopsy of a school's master schedule. Like, are we really utilizing all of the FTE that we have? For example, sometimes we have a seventh period authorization that costs us $10,000 to $12,000 for a teacher to add another period. If they've had that period for a long time, teachers sometimes think, well, this is now a part of my salary. Actually, that is not a guaranteed part of the salary. We need to look at, are we utilizing those in the best places possible? And what is reasonable in terms of numbers of instructional aides? We have some schools that have 20 or 30 instructional aides, is that the best use of our resources? So it's important to remember, we can do a lot of things with our budget, we just can't do everything with the budget. So, and we really have tried to engage in some creative problem solving. People have reached out to Devin and Steve, to myself and Jared, and tried to work through some things and really trying to help with those situations. And then are there ways in which we can solve some of this more long-term in a district-wide system? Are there areas where we're maybe not being as efficient with our FTE that we really need to look at? And then I put on there, we'll, we'll have your back, meaning for principals. Like you're making these hard decisions to do what's in the best interest of your school and to take care of your school. And we know that's going to lead to some hard conversations with the communities, but we will support them in that and, and they need to know that. And then a lot of them are requesting some individual meetings and follow-up, so. Questions? Just a few minutes before seven.
Sorry.
No.
You're great. Okay, so I saw the, up here when you were talking about not taking money from the music, I'm going to use the wrong words. Does that include our art programs as well, or what's happening with our art?
So our BTS is, they're funding us at 75,000, you're going to have to correct me if I'm wrong, Devin, 75,000 per employee. That doesn't cover the full cost of the employee if we're talking about a certified teacher. So we are using, so a lot of times already principals are utilizing TSSA and land trust to help fill that so they can create, say, a full-time person that's shared between two schools, for example. So we are able to maintain those individuals, but we also have schools where we have an additional, like we might have a visual arts teacher and an additional music teacher and that's coming out of that class size reduction for music. We've left that money alone for this year. We just, we felt like we were already making so many changes that maybe we needed to pause for a hot minute and breathe. So. Any other questions?
And the 75,000 on that is if they are authorized for a full person.
That's correct.
So if they're only authorized for a half of an FTE, then that would cut them down. So it's not just an automatic 75,000. We only are authorized for one full-time person right now and one three-quarter time person. And then the rest of them are.
How do you score or?
Just for the ones that have applied for BTS.
BTS funded schools, okay, thank you. And other schools can use their FTE though to support art teachers or stuff?
So we have, we have a couple of schools that have given them another half an FTE. The others want it to be part-time.
Gina, were you, did you?
I just said thank you.
Oh, okay.
That's a lot of math.
Yeah, she was.
Just, yeah, clarify, I think I get it in my head, but I want to make sure. When you say like the FTEs as opposed to just allocating money to go to tier one instruction, basically saying this FTE is to put a teacher in this classroom and we're really targeting that. First line of, first line of instruction, is that correct?
Yes. Now, if a principal comes forward and says, I am much rather in a situation where I feel like I could do more by, by having, say, instead of hiring another teacher, I could hire these aides because they could go in and support multiple grade levels. I just want them to have a conversation with Jared or Daryl about what that looks like to make sure that the support is still going in, that those people are pushing in for tier one instruction rather than that we're just interventioning people to death.
Yes.
All right, we are going to table our items 11 through 15 and we're just going to move those to our. And so is there a motion to adjourn? All right, this study session is adjourned, we'll see you all in the PDC in just a few minutes.